To Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, town meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we close the doors? There's a little bit of noise going on. No, you can't close the doors, never mind.
They're leaving.
Closing anyway, right? Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mike Joseph?
Yeah.
Fran Hudson?
Here.
Doris. Doris LaBranche?
Here.
And Adam Lent is absent this evening. And Lee Trahan?
Here.
It is now. Okay, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Anybody have any disclosures? I see none. Can I have a motion to approve June ninth and June twenty-six minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And can we please have a vote, Audra?
This is for both June ninth and twenty-sixth.
Correct.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
I should say Adam is absent this evening, just so anybody. He was detained, not by the police. Communications, we have a, an appointment. Could I have a motion to approve Diane Wheeler to the Agricultural Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Is this a renewal, Audra?
She is new. She is filling Sally's term. Sally has resigned from the committee, so she's taking her place.
Right. Can we have a vote, please?
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Reports of committees and commissions. Let's start with the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Winslow residents, esteemed councilors. My monthly notes for the month of June, two thousand twenty-five. During the month of June, I started employee interviews in, interviewing all town employees. I started with the police department. It's basically just an introductory interview. My goal is to get through the entire town and see every employee and, and have a good face-to-face discussion about goals and how they see the town and, and where I can help improve things. The Garland Road, the Fish Bridge located on the Garland Road over Patty Pond Brook in Winslow will be closed to traffic starting July fifteenth. This has been posted on social media and the town website, town Facebook page. The bridge will be closed to all traffic for one hundred continuous days while the bridge is removed and replaced, essentially extending it one hundred feet to allow migrating fish from Sebastiacook up through, to Patty's Pond. A temporary signed detour will be in place to redirect traffic around the bridge during the bridge closure period. Message boards will be placed at least two weeks prior, which will give motorists advance warning of the shutdown. The Junior High demolition project that we have going on, we have signed a contract with EnviroVantage in the month of June for the demo work itself. Statewide asbestos removal. Currently has the contract for asbestos abatement. They're in the final stages of their project. They were scheduled, as of last week, to wrap up operations this Wednesday. Due to illnesses, it looks like it's going to get pushed to Thursday, so we're going to push forward by one day. I do have copies of reports from the last survey from Icon Environmental with regard to roofing material, things of that nature, testing for asbestos material. The latest survey was executed with caulking around the windows. That was tested for PCBs. The caulking where the seam is between the old junior high and the new wing, that was actually tested, tested positive for PCBs. The exterior brick and mortar from the old section, the oldest section of the school, was tested, both brick and mortar. One hundred percent clear, no asbestos material was found. Those formal reports are forthcoming, so I should be getting those from Craig at Icon Environmental here in the coming weeks. As it stands for the demo work, we're waiting on, on two documents from EnviroVantage before we can issue a letter to proceed, at which point you'll start to see some mobilization, some fencing going up and things of that nature around the junior high. With regard to timelines with EnviroVantage, we are looking to be complete by contract end of October, substantially complete by the end of September. That's the timeline for demolition at this point. Sunset Heights, we conducted a preliminary meeting with Wright Pierce to review the project, describe phases, forecast any challenges and issues that may arise. Myself and Public Works Director Paul Fongamy sat in that meeting. MMA, I was able to attend the new town manager conference in June, June fifth in Augusta. Excellent conference, lots of information, very informative. Fiscal notes, I conducted an end-of-year budget review with each department head. We basically focused on any overruns or any severely underspent light items, discussed those issues. I've started to compile all my notes from that, and I'll have a report that I can send to the council by the next town council meeting. Let's see, local economy, I visited Lambert's Auto Dealership. They had their ribbon-cutting event. They moved from one side of two oh one to the other. I meant to get there on the ribbon-cutting event, but due to circumstances, I wasn't able to make it, so I paid a visit, had a nice, a nice visit with them. Great folks, great vehicles. Winslow CSO Master Plan, myself, Paul Fongamy, the Public Works Director. We reviewed Winslow's combined sewer overflow, overflow master plan with Wright Pierce and Maine DEP. So Paul can provide some really good detailed information, but I'll give you a forty thousand foot view, as I understand it, as the new town manager. And essentially, CSO is a program that the town of Winslow is a part of, one of thirty-two communities across the state. It's a combined sewer overflow, so that means that when we have a high flow, whether it's due to heavy rains or whatever have you, there are portions of wastewater that end up in the river. It's been like that for decades, and this program, this CSO program, is designed to help the town of Winslow get off that CO, CSO list and eventually have zero discharge into our waterways. So when we talk about, when we talk about Sunset Heights, when we talk about Chaffee Brook Pump Station, Phase One, Phase Two, these are all parts and components of the CSO program to help Winslow minimize and eventually completely abate any sort of discharge into our waterways. So it's a great thing. It's been obviously a very long process, and there are many more steps to get through. When we talk about Sunset Heights, we're looking at two years for Phase One, right? So then we got Phase Two to hit the rest of the neighborhood. So this is certainly not anything that is rushed. There are certainly things that affect timelines, but I just wanted to be able to provide that overview for both the councilors as well as the public with regard to the CSO program, what it means, and how Chaffee Brook, Phase One, Phase Two, and Sunset Heights plays into that overall program. So unless you have any questions on that. Excellent. I have one final statement. This is hot off the press. So I'll go ahead and read this statement. It's a public statement. So on Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, Winslow Public Works crews were working on excavating the site of the foundation for the new stage at Fort Halifax Park. During the excavation, the crew discovered three teeth and three small bones. All work was immediately halted. They called me. I, in turn, called the Winslow Police Chief. He grabbed the detective, and we immediately dispatched over to Fort Halifax, responding promptly. We secured the site and initiated a formal chain of custody. The items were then transported by the department detective to the Maine State Medical Examiner's Office, which conducted a preliminary assessment. Their assessment determined that the remains are not recent in our, of historical nature or origin. The Maine Historical Preservation Commission, as soon as I returned back to the office, that was my first phone call, I called the Maine Historical or Historic Preservation Commission. I took, spoke with the director, and then I also spoke with the state lead archaeologist, Dr. Spice. So we made arrangements for him to come to the site today. So he was on-site. He worked with friends of Fort Halifax, Ray Karen, the Sexton for the town of Winslow. Public Works was there, I was there. So he began a review of the photos that we had taken. So today, the archaeologist conducted an onsite inspection and examined excavated soil stored at the public, Public Works garage. No additional human remains were found. However, a small piece of pre-European indigenous pottery, some fire-altered rock, and evidence of historical industrial activity were identified. Based on the observed site conditions, it appears the ground was disturbed during prior industrial demolition. I think back when there was an old gas station, or there were some old industrial facilities there at Fort Halifax proper today, which likely mixed with historical material into the fill layers. The state archaeologist is conducting or coordinating with the Penobscot Tribal Historic Preservation Officer to ensure that all findings are respectfully and thoroughly reviewed. Previous guidance from the Penobscot Tribe has been to place the remains back in the spot where they were found and re-bury them. The town of Winslow is, is pending receipt of a formal report from the State Medical Examiner's Office, and at this time, construction remains paused as the site continues to be evaluated in accordance with the state and tribal heritage preservation guidelines. The town of Winslow is reevaluating the plans for the new stage. As it stands right now, rather than doing a foundation and not disturbing any more earth, we're looking at a slab type of formation for, or foundation for the, for the stage. That's pretty much it for those, for those notes. So that was, we kind of held off on, on putting out any information because, one, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we got the word back from the State Medical Examiner's Office that they, in fact, are, are historical in nature and, and not like a missing persons case or whatever. So wanted to make sure that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's and, so it's actually pretty exciting, you know, that we, we found some, some remains there. And we're gonna, we're gonna follow, obviously, the tribal guidance. As it stands right now, we have, we're gonna start backfilling where the foundation was excavated, and we're gonna put the remains right back where we found it, recover it, and we should be good to go. Any questions? I know that's, that's a lot of information, but...
They were human remains, then?
Yes, yeah, so precisely, they were. And, and we'll eventually post this statement along with some photos of the items. So the items consisted of three teeth. Two, you can clearly see are, are definitely, would look to be molars. I'm not sure about the other one, and then maybe some sort of a finger bone, and then there's two other, we think are bones, but we're not exactly sure. Again, pending report from the Medical Examiner's Office. And then, once they're done with it, the Maine Historical Preservation Commission and the state lead archaeologist will, I'm sure, do their review anyway.
Interesting.
Yeah, very interesting, yeah.
I have a question through the chair.
Yes, sir.
On that particular area where we're digging, Paul, now, how deep was that foundation supposed to go for that stage?
About three feet.
Now, we have to go with a slab. Is, now, if we have another flood, which could happen anytime, you never know with Maine, but how secure will it be with a slab opposing to? What did we have to do in changing the structure of that particular?
I'm gonna talk to Sean tomorrow, but I'm thinking that maybe we put some of those helicoil piles that they have out now?
That goes into the ground?
Yeah. Tie the rebar into that.
Yeah.
So we'll have some extra protection against uplift. I mean, the slab itself, it obviously is quite massive, we'll probably pick it up to it and be heavier, but...
Now, that slab, how thick is that slab gonna be?
It was gonna be five inches. We might go up to seven or eight, something, get some extra weight.
They're putting styrofoam underneath it?
I'll see what Sean says.
For frost?
There's really no frost issue there? Not much. It's never plowed out, it's always under the snow, so. If he was gonna put something, we probably will, but...
Yeah. You're talking about Sean from?
Hey, Paul.
Sean Dixon.
Dixon, yeah. You hit the microphone.
Okay. So do we, do we have to change the area where it's gonna be?
No, we're gonna stick, we'll stick to where it was.
Oh, okay.
But I'll build it up with some gravel, probably, to get it up higher.
So they have no issue with that?
Nope, that's, those are the phone calls you like to have, but...
Yeah.
Hey, we found some teeth. Okay.
Well, thank you, Paul, also for the, for the guide rails you put on for Mrs. Appoin up on the China Road. I had called you a couple of weeks ago, and they were already put in, just wanted to thank you.
I asked DOT, that's all I could do, and...
Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Steve, is there a time where we're going to actually find out, not the person's name, but who these bones and teeth belong to? Were they indigenous?
Actually, no, because part of the tribal historic preservation methodology is they, they really prefer not to disturb it, so they don't like it when you carbon date or anything, because it's all spiritual. So they, if, if you start carbon dating, that means you're disturbing the bone, and you have to actually remove carbon, which could disturb the spirit and whatnot. So it, they prefer to please do not test it, don't carbon date it, just put it back where it was.
So we don't know, it could be a caveman, right?
So essentially, we'll never know. Yeah, I don't, it was like, I guess where they found it was, was right at the base of the fill and where it meets the silt line from, you know. I, I guess Paul can explain that a little better, but...
Well, I mean, basically, what he noticed this morning, too, is pretty sure this came from somewhere else, because of how they were deposited. I mean, you know, we, we did all the graves at the cemetery last year, and the fine teeth without the jaws or anything else is kind of, it's kind of strange.
Yeah.
So there's a good thought, he thought that they, especially by the color of them, since the soil there isn't that dark, that they might have come in with some fill from somewhere else. I mean, it's really hard to tell.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. So we'll put them back, we'll bury them, and move forward. That's all we can do. Remember when I said we should build a stage over by the VIP, but...
I have one other question through the chair. When you were talking about the junior high, we're talking about, they found asbestos in that caulking.
Yes, that's PCBs.
Is that, is that gonna be more costly and to, to remove?
No. No, it's part of the process, it's part of the contract. So essentially, through, through the demolition process, what'll happen is they'll, they'll remove a window, bring the window down, that'll give statewide an opportunity to remove all the, the caulking and any sort of sealant that's in the frame itself, remove that, and then properly dispose of it in the containers, the sealed containers, and then the windows will be disposed of.
Okay.
The same thing with where the joint is between the new and the old part of the building, all of that stuff. I forgot to mention, there's, there's also the same type of caulking. I guess there must have been a leak on the roof at one point, is that same caulking up there. So as, as the building comes down, when they, when they have that section of roof, they'll remove that caulking and dispose of it properly per, per regulation.
Thank you, Steve.
Which was already all in there, already in the contract, right?
Correct, yes.
Yes, a lot of people didn't know, that's the reason why I had asked you.
Yep.
I got a question through the chair.
Sir.
Steve, as far as the demolition goes, will they be able to keep those trees up in front of the building?
That's, that's the plan. At least the one on the right, what is it, the spruce?
Yeah, the other trees are gone.
The other trees are gone, yeah.
There were half, there were half, yeah, there were some.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions, sir?
Nope, that'll do it, thank you.
Yes, sir. Barring any other questions, that's all I have. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that would like to?
I do have something. I'm gonna take off my town clerk hat and put on the tax collector hat.
There you go.
We, so the fourth installment for taxes were due at the beginning of June. We gave the ten-day grace period for everyone to come in and make those payments, and then we proceeded, me and the three girls out front, to call roughly five hundred people that still had taxes that were due, to remind them that they were at that point late. As many people as we could find, as many phone numbers as we could find, and as of Thursday, I have printed two hundred and sixty-nine, sixty-nine thirty-day demands. Those demands are saying, in thirty days, we will lean your property if you don't make payment, and those should be mailed out tomorrow. So just to give everyone a heads up, a lot of people get that certified mail, they don't necessarily enjoy getting it, but we have tried to call everybody. It's a long process, but I think majority of the people that we've spoken to have forgotten or were very thankful that we called before sending out those letters, so.
Thank you, Audra.
Thank you.
Just a quick question to the chair. Audra, as far as the two hundred and sixty-nine, is that a typical amount, or is that far greater than usual?
I think it's actually less than normal.
Okay.
I think we usually hover around three hundred, so it's a little bit less. I think we're doing better at making sure we save everyone's phone numbers and trying to, to reach out to people. Sometimes it's hard to find contacts, but we try our best.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully, most, some, we'll always have liens, that won't ever go away, but hopefully, a lot of people will get those notices and come in. We have quite a few new homeowners that don't get a tax bill because they've bought their home mid-year, so we're sending those out to those people as well, to make sure they know that they need to make those payments.
Thank you, Audra.
Thanks, Audra.
Okay, so I see no other reports to be given. Can I have a motion to approve all reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And a vote, please.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
We have no table business. Under old business, ordinance number zero four dash two thousand twenty-five, an amendment to ordinance number ten two zero two four, Personnel Rules and Regulations for Town Employees, amending various sections by adding the underline and deleting the strike-through language in the attached documents. This is an amendment with a change to the pet policy. Do I have a motion to amend the pet policy?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Steve, do you need to speak to say what the change in the pet policy is, or are we all good?
Through the chair, basically self-explanatory, based off of a public comment from the first reading, basically omitted any avenue for somebody to bring a pet to work. So essentially, no pets are allowed at work, whereas the, the previous version of the policy allowed for somebody to bring a pet for a quick thirty-minute visit, fifteen-minute visit, whatever. Based on public input, I felt that it was a prudent request, and we basically omitted all pets from the town office.
Okay.
Other than service animals?
Other than ADA-compliant service animals, correct.
Which was in your policy.
Correct.
So any more discussion on the pet policy change? Um. Go ahead.
Thank you for the revision to the pet policy. I think the one item that should be left in, that was crossed out, that said, stated pets are not permitted at field work sites, should be left in there, because right now it only covers the actual office. I know if someone brought a pet onto my yacht, I don't care who it is, whether it's Public Works, the town manager, the assessor, the code enforcement, I wouldn't want a pet running around my yacht if they were there conducting town business. So if that statement, number two, was left in there, then it would be comprehensive. So. I have one other thing that was also within the personnel policy that seemed to be a configuration control thing for me on, because I looked at the initial version for the, from the first reading, and then the actual second reading, under five point two standard... for the, from the first reading, and then the actual second reading, under five point two standard hours of work. The initial reading had some strike throughs and additions made. This reading did not have any in that paragraph, and it kind of left the wording to be, my interpretation, in conflict with the title twenty six Labor and Industry Employment Practices about rest breaks, because the way it's currently worded, it essentially leaves it up to the employee whether they wanna take an unpaid lunch break thirty minutes, whereas the actual revised statutes under that says they may be employed or permitted to work for no more than six hours consecutive at one time, unless given the opportunity to work, to take at least a thirty, thirty consecutive minutes of rest time. There are exceptions if you have police, fire, activity and so forth, it's, you know, life and death and safety situation. But to me, the way, the two versions of the document under paragraph five point two, they seem to be changed, and it does kind of violate the, I can give this to anyone that wants it. I printed it out, the title twenty six Labor and Industry Rest.
Chapter seven, subchapter one A.
Um, yes.
I, but you said, the statute states they're given the opportunity, but they are given the opportunity. It's not saying they have to take it, they're given the opportunity, but the, and the town does give them that opportunity.
It also, I'd say it, it leaves it open to interpretation. To me, getting to the law of diminishing returns of someone working ten hours straight, um, in terms of, is that really prudent work practice?
Right, but I, again, I really believe, because you said in the statute and in our, it's, they are given the opportunity, so that, I don't think it's a forced, forced, go take your break sort of thing, but.
Through, through the chair.
Go ahead.
Um, Lenny, can you respond to that as far as taking that time off or that, that, that's needed? Is that something that the union stands on?
No, it's just we, police and fire, we basically, because we're on call all the time we're working, we basically don't have a set time to eat, and, and everybody understands that, there's no problem with that, the union's fine with it, they can, you know, they can eat, but if a call comes in, they leave their meal and go.
So we're fine with this here?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Lenny.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? We discuss, yeah, so it's a motion to amend the pet policy.
We, yes, that's what's on the.
And we had the first and second? And we just discussed, right?
Yep, second.
So can we have a vote, please?
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
That was the second reading, correct?
That was a motion to amend the pet policy.
Now we're going to vote to, on the ordinance?
Yes, to approve the ordinance number four dash two thousand twenty five, as amended.
Right, as amended, do I have a first?
So moved.
A second. And a vote.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, under new business, order number twenty two dash two thousand twenty four, authorization for the town manager to sign the attached dispatch public safety answering point service agreement with the City of Waddell for a one year term. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And as far as discussion, this is what was already placed in the budget, right?
Yes.
Does anybody have any further discussion? Can we have a vote?
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Order number twenty three dash two thousand twenty four, authorization for the town manager to sell property located, I'm sorry, located on the Garland Road in Winslow, for the amount of one thousand eight hundred to Brook, and I'm so sorry, I'm not gonna say it right, so I'm just gonna say the last name, Blair. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And can we have a vote?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
Uh, Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, order number twenty four dash two thousand twenty five, authorization for the town manager to renew the information technology service agreement with the City of Waddell for a one year term, motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? And can we have a vote, please?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
Uh, Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
We do have another order we'd like to place on the agenda that wasn't placed on the agenda, so I'd like to have a motion to suspend the rules, to add it to this agenda. It is for the Bernstein Sure contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Would you like to speak on it?
Sure.
Can I get a vote real quick on the motion to suspend the rules? Uh, Doris?
Yes.
Uh, oh, Adam's not here, uh, Lee Trahan? And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson? Thank you, okay, go ahead.
Uh, so this is a three year contract with a new law firm, Bernstein and Sure. Three year contract, uh, which this, this particular contract is a monthly fixed fee. Uh, so it's a thirty six thousand dollar contract, at three thousand per month for twelve months. Just an overview of legal fees uh, for the town and the way they're broken out. So sewer operating expenses, line item fifty five eight twenty is a thousand dollar legal fee, uh, line item. Code enforcement operating expenses, fifty five eight twenty, uh, well, they're all fifty five eight twenty, I'm sorry. Uh, legal fees appropriated at five thousand, assessing appropriated at zero. Town council operating expense, legal fees appropriated at six thousand. Administered, uh, administration operating expenses, legal fees are appropriated at forty thousand for a total of fifty two thousand, uh, for FY twenty six. Again, this contract is for thirty six thousand. Gone through the contract extensively, um, had council review um, the contract, and pretty much all of our, I, I think it's potentially a, a good way to, to save money uh, on legal fees this year, as you, as you know from FY twenty five, we were severely overrun by roughly to two hundred and twenty percent or so. I've had some discussions with uh, Madam Chair, and uh, we're, we're gonna move forward with uh, strict, some strict guidelines and communicating amongst each other a little bit better as far as the use of legal fees, and uh, at our next uh, department head meeting, I'll do the same with the department heads, we'll kind of rein in those costs. Um, it was a little bit much uh, last year, so. Uh, I think we have a great contract, I've had some discussions with uh, Matt Tersevich, which will be our, our lead representative from the firm, and uh, everything is set to go. This is roughly the, this is the second revision for this contract. We just made some minor tweaks here and there, back and forth, so barring, barring any other questions, that's all I have.
Now, through the chair though, I'd like to express that, what we were talking about is that we're planning on doing a lot more, asking questions with MMA instead of using the attorney all the time. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I just want the public to know that, so we're gonna try to keep that expense down.
I'll add in that over this past year, it's been an uncommon year for legal needs as well. It's not that we're overly using, it's just we've overly needed to use as well.
Correct, that's a, I think that's a fair assessment from what I know, so.
Any other, any other discussion on it? Can we have a motion to approve the order as presented?
So moved. Second.
That's order twenty five, two thousand twenty five, and can we have a vote, please?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
Uh, Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Do you want to waive the second reading on that?
That would be wonderful, let's, thank you very much, Audrey. We, we, we need an attorney as soon as possible, so yeah, we should do that.
We should do that, yeah. Um, do I have a motion to waive the second?
So moved, second.
And a vote.
Uh, Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
Uh, Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading passes four to zero.
Again, thank you, Audrey. Okay, discussion items, traffic on Barton and First Street, presented by Doris, sponsored by Doris.
I had a constituent email me about a concern, um, a traffic concern on Barton and First Street. Officer McDate, have you had a chance to go out and look at that area?
Extensively.
Oh, okay.
Extensively.
Yeah, I, I went up there myself and I wanted your opinion as well.
Yeah, it's um, they're side streets and I understand the frustration. I know in the five years I've been here, there's been multiple conversations with um, the police department and then the superintendent and other teachers, and I think everybody's tried to find the best solution. And, and the big thing I want to stress, it's, you know, it's, I, I can see the frustration on the people that live there, but I don't think the parents are doing anything really intentionally wrong, they're just trying to drop their kids off.
That's not part of the school property though, is it?
No, she's talking about the streets. What, what's happening is they're getting backed up, so some of the parents, uh, there's a time lapse between the high school and the elementary school drop off, so parents are going on a side street and waiting. If, is that what you're getting for complaints?
Correct.
But what's happening is the residents, because there's so much traffic on the side of the road, they can't get in or out of their street or their driveways.
Right.
Right.
Do you recommend putting up signs on one side of the street?
We can do that, I just think it's gonna be, um, I hate to, I mean, I'm not saying when we get a call up, they will definitely go up and try to take care of the problem, but it's difficult to, if people are sitting in their cars and the car's running, um, it's not the same as if someone, a parking violation where someone's left the car and, and taken off.
That's true.
You know, the, the long-term solution, and of course it costs money, and I talked with Paul about this too, they're gonna have to do some kind of a traffic study and move the traffic in a different direction. I know, I can only talk in other places I've worked, um, we had the same type of situation, we actually made a separate entrance for the buses and a separate entrance for the parents dropping off kids. In that way, there was no confusion and there was no, um, we actually had to put another road across the lawn, and the buses went in one direction and the parents went in the other direction, and that stopped the whole problem.
So you recommend a traffic study be performed before we take any action?
I, I, I think if everybody gets, instead of spending money, I think between the people we have in charge in this town, I think we can come to a solution.
Sure.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. So I had a discussion with um, Superintendent Tibbita today, uh, great discussion. Um, he, he's fully aware of it, uh, through this discussion and a, and a previous discussion, he really is unsure and he doesn't think it occurred where a memo went out at the beginning of the school year notifying parents, um, where, how to, how to conduct the drop off and, and how not to use those side streets to use the little walking path through the, through the trees. So, it, it appears that a memo may not have gone out in the past. So they're gonna make a wholehearted effort to ensure that the word does get out this year, at the beginning of the school year, uh, via formal memo, to ensure that the parents are not utilizing those side streets to drop off their kids. He did say that, I, I don't know if it was a formal traffic study, but he did say that they looked at one point, you know, of rerouting traffic, uh, you know, through where the grass is now, um, but that's, that's gonna cost money. You know, he doesn't necessarily know if, you know, the, the school is, you'd have to get with the school board, obviously, and, and discuss those, those issues with the school board, but, um.
Don't they have that whole parking lot right before the school?
They do, and they do utilize both.
That huge parking lot?
They use the front of the school for drop off as well as the, the old, you know, Martin's parking lot.
Well, what do they use that for? That should be parent pickup.
That, that's a, that's a student drop off as well and, and pickup point, uh, there's usually a faculty member out there at the edge of the parking lot.
So they're using both and they're still a bottleneck?
Yes, yeah, and then, yeah, they're still a bottleneck. Now, mind you, uh, maybe Mr. Price can uh, chime in on this, but the word I got from Superintendent Tibbita was that, you know, we're roughly talking about, when we all boil it all down, we're talking about a ten minute time period where there's a severe bottleneck on Benton Ave, you know, getting, getting entry into the school, people trying to leave. It, there's roughly about a ten minute where it's complete chaos. And if you've ever dropped your kids off at school, if you have kids, it, it, it can be a little messy and, and people just gotta calm down and take their time and not use those side streets, use whichever drop off or pickup point they're, they're told to.
I don't think it's a traffic problem the guy was complaining about.
No, it's not, not a traffic problem on Benton, he's talking about people utilizing that neighborhood, Barton and First Street.
Can you put a sign up that has a certain time? No parking during two o'clock to three o'clock, two, two o'clock to, can you do that?
I, I believe you can, but Paul would have to be involved in that, I don't put the signs up.
Because like you said, ten minutes for traffic delay could be somebody who needs to get to work and can't get out of their own street, it could be going to an appointment and having to leave a half hour sooner because somebody's in front of their driveway. I do understand their frustration.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, totally concur, um, there's obviously an issue. It, it's not a new issue, this has been going on for a while, so, you know, we gotta find some creative ways to resolve these issues, you know.
The memo's the start, but I think it needs to go a little bit further. I still, I do think it needs a sign or something to help those people out who have been waiting patiently for over ten years, right?
It's been a while.
His, his primary concern as well was, it was a safety issue. Do you have any concerns? Yes, please.
Kyle Price, one forty seven Clinton Avenue. So, as a previous administrator principal there, this, just a little bit of quick history, this became an issue really more so as a result of COVID. Because one of the issues that we had, like everything else, standing six feet from each other and all that stuff, we couldn't put enough people on the school buses to transport students. You had a limited, you had to do the same thing on the bus. So we actually encouraged parents at that particular point in time, excuse me, to help us out by transporting their children. And that has sort of held on a little bit. When we did that, and I was the principal there at the time, we created that um, use of the, what we call the Dean Street parking lot or the Martin's parking lot, the old Mill parking lot. If you go in there and you look, there's basically a runway that's been built with a couple of white lines. You know, we've asked people to enter there, and during COVID, we said, if your last name is Ada L, please use the drop off that's part of the school parking lot in front of the school. If you're M through Z, use the one over in the Dean Street parking lot. And we found that that wasn't a perfect system, so we kind of modified it a little bit, then we just kind of basically left it for parents, you know, use both, you know, use the one that makes the most sense. And I do believe, I, I'm certainly not here to experience anything you heard today from Superintendent Tibbita, I do believe there's still links on our website that show aerial photos that show where we want people to drop off. I think that's under the family links section, I'm quite confident you could find it. You're right, it's a ten minute window, it's not every day, it's kind of odd to try to figure out when this happens. I've seen a little bit of pattern to it, but not one as a, now as a bus driver to recognize if there's any one hot day of the week. There is a lag between when school starts at the junior, at the junior high and high school and the elementary school, and I think if you're a parent that is dropping your children off in both places, you've got this little fifteen minute window of period where you don't have any place to go except go over to the elementary school and wait. And when it's really bad, it backs traffic up all the way out back out on Benton Avenue. And I do have some safety concerns about that, and I, I really was kind of jumping up and down in my head and tried to calm myself before I approached anybody about it as a bus driver, because one day, and it was one of our late start days, and I think those types of days are the ones where parents probably are transporting more, for whatever reason, that, it was so backed up It was so backed up that traffic was blocked going in both directions between Dean Street and the entrance to the elementary school, and probably back passed by the, by the credit union. I was really concerned about that. And I went in and I had a conversation with the principal and just said, you know, is there anything you can do to, just to take that pressure off? Because there's a bit of a rebound, right? At 7:35 is when, and that's an odd number, but it fits into everything else that makes school run, has for, is 20 years that I've been around. That's the drop-off to the elementary school. You know, you can start, all those people that are in line can start dropping off at 7:35, but it takes a while for that traffic to start to move, so you can really clear out Benton Avenue. So, they did come up with a plan where they could start just the parent drop-off five minutes earlier than the buses drop-off, just to start those cars flowing. So, the Barton Street, I've seen that, I'm eventually maybe going to have to drive my bus down to there, because technically, that's an area where we pick up kindergarteners. The two local neighborhoods on either side of the school, if you're in kindergarten, we do transport you if the parents desire. After that, they're close enough to walk, I suppose. I haven't had to go down Barton Street. I don't see a lot of parents doing that. I know which ones are. I recognize their vehicles. I would say a half dozen at the most on any given day are over in there. And it is, it's about 10 minutes. The other thing I would add, and again, it's already been made reference by Mr. Sucey, I have two thoughts in my mind about how to solve a little bit of this, because when a bus is backed up on Benton Avenue, it's 40 feet of space, you know? And when we're stuck out there, it really adds to that congestion. If we just had a second lane that could get us into our bus loop, it's not a lot in my mind, but I know it ends up being a lot of money. And I had suggested this back when they were rebuilding Benton Avenue. If we could just slip past that row of cars that are backed up all the way out to the road and get the buses in off the road, we could wait in that loop. We could fit into that loop, and that would take a little bit of pressure off. There's already an inch, second point I want to make, and this is maybe what Superintendent Tibbitot was referencing. When we were renovating the elementary school to bring the sixth grade over as part of the whole discussion about the junior high, there was a plan to build a separate bus entrance or create some solutions to this problem, and also add more parking for the elementary school. Because if you do have a large event, like a concert or something like that, that also is a very, the parking space that's really right in front of the high, junior high, I'm sorry, elementary, is not big enough to serve the total capacity of that school. And it's even more now with an extra grade there, sixth grade being there. Now that the town owns the Dean Street parking lot, that has taken that pressure off. But there is a drawn map, I'm assuming done by the engineers that were doing some reconstruction planning for the elementary school, that has another parking space and another entrance that would help alleviate some of this problem. The problem of it was, back to the money issue, at the time, it was like $500,000 to do this work. And we spent $460 doing the renovations inside the building. So you had a choice, that was all we had. You had a choice of spending $500,000 to solve a traffic parking problem, or do the real inner renovations that we needed to do inside the building at that time. So, those are, those are my overall thoughts.
Through the chair.
I'd like to ask you, in the back where the sixth grade, do they come in through there as well, or they all come in through the front?
No, there's no, all of the access to the building is through that front.
Through that front door?
Yeah, there's no access on the backside. There's a little bit of parking on the backside, which is really reserved for our kitchen staff. And that's where the dumpster is located, in our food waste trashcans and that sort of thing.
All right, thank you.
But you have to go, the other thing that I've observed is that people, they're trying to get into the building to be there for work, and that, when that traffic's backed all the way up, back out to the road, they sometimes have to go in the out, you know? And I'm sure people look at that and say, what's going on there? But I recognize what that is. They're trying to get past all this backed-up traffic, so they can get to a parking space so they can get inside the building to work. Yeah, I guess I'll stop there.
All right, thank you.
I worry, we're lucky, I worry that there could be an accident there, because when it does start flowing, you've got all this traffic backed up out on Benton Avenue, it's hard to see coming out. You got to, you got to nose yourself out. And unfortunately, the public is not patient enough to let that release itself. There's enough room there for a third, we create a third lane really by getting as far over to the right as we can. And people can get around you if they're trying to pass all the way through. But when they start doing that, and now people are trying to come out, when this sort of release occurs at 7:35, there's a good opportunity for people to have an accident there. It would not be a problem if they're driving the posted speed limit of 50 miles an hour during that time of day. That would not be an issue. But it does not happen that way.
There's no crossing guards there either?
No.
No, no kidding.
There's a, there really isn't any pedestrian crossing at that particular location?
No, but to direct the traffic.
Yeah, yeah, there is, there is a crosswalk there. Those are all thoughts that we've had of what could we do there. I think years and years ago, I hear stories about student volunteers that worked as crossing guards, sixth graders, fifth graders, whatever, but that was, that was when seniors in high school drove buses too, so.
That's true.
So, so do you recommend that we start with the memo first, see if that helps with the, okay? And in that memo, could it also include a map of where parents, direct the parents?
Just to get over here to my phone.
Absolutely. And some of that stuff has already been created, and it would, it would not be hard to do. One of our tech guys did some drone photos for us, and it's pretty well laid out.
So this isn't repetitive? You haven't already done all this?
We have done this. I don't know if a specific letter at the beginning of the school year really drew attention to that. It was during the COVID thing. We certainly had a lot of attention to that for the couple of years around that. But the, the, it's not a lot of work to get this particular part done.
We'll start with the memo and include the map. I know when school starts, initially, there's a bottleneck, because it's the first few weeks of school, but after that, things should start to slow down and give us a real...
I think an emphasis to be, don't use Barton Street, however politically correct that could be used, would be legitimate, because we have pretty decent space if people would just have a little bit of patience and time. And the other thing I was going to say first when I was up here is, I don't want this to put anybody off in the wrong way, but we do have school buses.
Yes.
That are driving that same route, so.
Somebody asked me the same question.
Put your child, yeah, put your child on the bus.
Why are they picking up their kids if we have buses?
We'll take good care of them, all right?
Kyle, I'll get one other question. The property across from the, when you walk, when you drive into the school, that's still owned by Martin's, right?
I don't know who owns that. This, where the scale is, and what we call, what I call the Scale House Road?
Yeah.
I, I don't, I can't.
That's directly across?
Yes.
I was wondering if we could do something with that, find out who owns that, and if there's any way that we could do something with that.
Well, that's the route that people are darting by all of us anyway. So, if they don't go by us in that third middle lane I'm talking about, they go zipping through and come out the other side, and that just adds another dimension. A little bit of it is I've seen some drivers coming from Benton towards the elementary school that are turning left into the, into the, you know, into the school, but they don't get far enough over to the left-hand lane, and so people can't get around them without going up onto the curb of the sidewalk. And you can just see the frustration start to boil. But it can, you know, that's just some basic driver ed in my mind.
Thank you, Kyle.
I always hold off. If I see somebody in that lane, and I'm at the point of turning in, I hold off so those people got a space to get off the road. You know, I, I, I'm not in a big enough rush to have to beat somebody turning left into the school. When I'm turning in their right, they can, they can have my space.
Thank you, Kyle.
So Steve, you're gonna, can you email Mr. Tibbitot, remind him to send that memo out at the beginning of the school year for the parents?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Along with the map? And a few weeks after things start to slow down, and people have their routine down back, then we can look at this again?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, through the chair.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so what I'll do from today forward, I'm going to do exactly what you just asked there, but I'll also ensure that I have engaging communication and conversations with folks like Mr. Price that have extensive history with those types of issues, Mr. Tibbitot, obviously, the current principal at the Winslow Elementary School, as well as Chief McDade. And we'll, we'll put our heads together. We'll probably have a meeting at some point and just discuss these issues and come up with some more creative ways and build upon these ideas that we've talked about tonight. And hopefully, putting all of that together, we can, we can mitigate some of those issues. We've got a little bit of time, but not much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody good on the discussion? And next up is an update on KBCAP Public Transportation. And that was, I put that on there. We just updated the contract with KBCAP for another year. It's demand response public transportation, which means when you call for a ride, you should say you're calling for public transportation. Or they're going to say, well, where's your Medicare card? Where's your, all this other? You don't need to show any of that. So just make sure you try to remember, it's public transportation you're calling for. It's going to be open still Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, except for federal holidays. 8:30 in the morning till 4:00. It's a first-come, first-serve. It does have an established zone in Winslow. The northern border of the zone is Simpson Ave, to the southern border at Carter Memorial Bridge. And the western zone border will be the Kennebec River, and the east border will be Kim's Garage and Smiley Ave. So all that big area going to Waterville and back. The price did go up from $3 to $5 each time you get in. Still considerably a lot cheaper than a cab. But if you're over 65 years of age, or a United States military veteran, it'll be $3. It's intercity service is the $5. If you want to go to Augusta, which I didn't know, which is stated in the contract, if you need to go to Augusta from Winslow and back, you can use them as well. And that is $10 to get in, and $10 to come back, with $5 if you're over 65 or a United States military veteran. You must call at least the day before if you need a ride. They do provide curb-to-curb. They will pick you up right at your house, drop you off right at your house. It's a wonderful service to use. And we will watch it for the next year to see if it's worth, because the town is paying a set fee for the contract as well. We give them a set amount of money to provide this service for us at the low cost that they do. So I hope people realize you can use it for shopping, doctor's appointments, going to work. I know some people have used it because their cars broke down, they needed to go to work. So it's a really good service. So get the word out, if you know anybody that needs transportation, please continue to use KBCAP, so we can keep it here in Winslow for the people that need it. And we're going to, I asked Audra if she wanted to post it on the town webpage with all the information that I just gave, so people will know the phone number and repeat some of the stuff I just said. So people can find it on the Facebook page as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Just some statistics on last year's ridership. So, cities or towns that were a destination or an origin point for this service, for KBCAP, was Augusta, Benton, Fairfield, Oakland, Waterville. And it looks like a total of 406 trips from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. 406 trips were made.
That's not bad for the first year. Get the word out there, you know? Use it, use it, use it. We don't want to lose it. Pretty, pretty good thing to have. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
And now we are up for a public comment.
I do have one email that was sent to me to be read. Let me do that now.
Go ahead.
This email also came with images of documents that will be posted to the minutes. My name is Kyla Mahalovitz. I live at, in District 4, which is represented by Doris LaBranche on Corbett Lane. For more than a year, I have had to deal with the bad behavior of particular members of this council, especially the current chair, Fran Hudson, and are now, and now my council representative, Doris LaBranche. Why is that? It's because I dare to defy them to support the 2024-25 school budget and to continue to speak up as a citizen in order to hold them accountable, which they desperately need and should welcome. On April 30th, my council representative, Doris LaBranche, submitted false testimony to the Waterville District Court in order to seek an emergency protection order against me. After this request was rightfully denied by a judge, she asked for a formal hearing. My council representative then failed to complete the process to have me served by the sheriff, thus denying my right to due process. When the court date came on June 23rd, which I knew nothing about, my council representative didn't even show up. Her case was fully dismissed by a judge. I only heard about it when I received the final judgment in the mail after the fact. If the representative from District 4 actually felt threatened by an email, she would have followed through and not wasted the court's time. It's not lost on me that the council representative from District 1, Mike Joseph, tried the same stunt against our former town manager last year, which was also dismissed by a judge. I'm submitting documentation I received from the district court with this comment, which I hope I will be included in the meeting minutes and made available to the public. I, as a taxpayer-paying citizen they are trying to silence, believe this action by my council representative needs to be out in the open for the sake of transparency, which inward often invokes by council but never practiced.
I'd like to answer that. But one thing I'm appalled of this type of behavior. You know, we're supposed to be building this community. It seems like there's always somebody who's trying to tear it down. And I want to clarify one thing. What I had done is trying to get a protection order. It failed, because you have to have three harassment notices before you get a protection order. So I did get harassment notice served on that person, and that was through a sheriff's department. I believe that's what happened with Doris as well. And as well as far as the public schools, Doris wasn't even here on the, on the, on the board to vote for that. So why is it that we always have somebody that's trying to tear this town apart and just bringing up old stuff? Why can't we move on and build this community back up again? I'm just frustrated with this whole thing. You know, and this has to stop, because this is another form of retaliation, because she lost against Doris? Is this possibly a harassment? I'd like to have that be noted with police and the sheriff's department. Thank you.
I'd like to say something. I'd like to start on a positive note. First, I'd like to say thank you to our new town manager, Steve Sucey, for the outstanding work he has done thus far. Winslow is fortunate to have such a dedicated and capable leader at the helm. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
I'd like to take a moment to respond to the email that was read this evening. I want to remind this individual that the harassment order with the town of Winslow remains in effect. I have also been advised not to respond. With that said, I do want to say to this individual, I forgive you. I want this town to move forward. The best way to move forward for this town is with respect and to focus on what really matters, what matters most to this community. This is how we build a community. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? I will. I want to say that I have stayed quiet for a total of about 18 months with public comments, personal attacks. It's to be expected. We all knew that was going to happen when we ran. To have continuous turmoil in a town is never good. And as much as I stayed silent on all of it for 18 months, I will say tonight, I, like Doris, forgive those as well, for the ill feelings, the personal attacks that were not true or warranted. It's to be expected. I understand that. But we are all going to just get past all of this and start, as Mike said, just build up. Let's just keep going. It's been good. It's been quiet. It's turning in the right direction. Let's just keep going, it's been good, it's been quiet, it's turning in the right direction, let's just keep going. And that's all I have to say about it. Public comment should be used in a productive manner for the town.
Amen.
It's a right everybody has, and that's why it was allowed to be read this evening. It's her right to be heard, it's anybody's right to be heard, but let's show a little respect in the future, just a little bit. Thank you. And now, we're going to go into the motion to enter an executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056C disposition of real property.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Chief.
Show of hands, we don't need that.
Do we do a roll call or?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Hold, hold on one second, we're not quite done the meeting yet, I need to do our roll call. Sorry. Doris LaBranche?
Here.
Yes, you want to?
Yes, that's right.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion to go into an executive session, passes 40.
Sorry.